Tuesday, September 5th, 2017 to order. The invocation will be given this evening by Councilman Krieger.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us with wisdom, with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Julie, please call the roll. Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Landik?
Here.
Mr. Marn?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mrs. Dowling?
Here.
Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Okay, approval of minutes of the special meeting of August 15th, 2017?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
And the regular meeting of August 15th, 2017?
So moved.
Please call the roll.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to take a moment and turn the floor over to Chief Knight, who would like to do a special recognition for one of his officers.
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. Thank you for giving me a little bit of your time. I'd like to recognize Officer Eric Kupchak this evening. Every year, mostly are familiar with MAD, Mothers Against Drunk Driving, every year MAD of Ohio gives out what they refer to as Awards of Excellence. These awards are presented to selected officers, judges, prosecutors, and prominent citizens throughout the state of Ohio, who have made a significant impact in their communities to stop impaired driving. Numerous officers from Ohio were presented with this award at the MAD Awards luncheon that was held on July 20th in Strongsville. Officer Eric Kupchak was nominated for the Award of Excellence for the City of Menner. Besides winning that, each year MAD chooses one of those officers as what they refer to as their top cop of all the award winners. This year, MAD chose Patrolman Eric Kupchak as a top cop for this year. I'd like to take a brief moment to read an excerpt from the nomination letter that was sent to MAD. Patrolman Kupchak, for his overall traffic enforcement efforts in 2016 and into 2017, has impacted the community by making the citizens and visitors to the City of Menner safer. During 2016, Patrolman Kupchak made approximately 500 traffic stops, resulting in the issuance of 351 traffic citations, 96 arrests. Of those 96, 44 were drug-related, and 36 were for OVI. His contributions continued into 2017. During the first quarter of 2017, he made approximately 200 traffic stops, resulting in the issuance of 145 citations and 43 arrests, 13 of which were for OVI. While these numbers are impressive, he still maintains several ancillary duties throughout the department. He serves as a field training officer, he's a crime scene evidence technician, and for several years now, he's been a member of the United States Secret Service Electronic Crimes Task Force, which does forensic examination of computers. He has completed examinations on evidence for several law enforcement agencies in the area, and during 2016, he was instrumental in the conviction of a suspect involved in a high-profile case involving multiple sex crimes. That suspect has been sentenced to 45 years in prison, thanks partially to Eric's work. I'd like to congratulate him on being top cop for MAD.
Thank you. New legislation, ordinance number 17-0-77.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to award a change order to CSX Transportation Inc. for the Plaza Boulevard Extension Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filippiac?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Swiger, please.
Thank you, Mr. Filippiac. CSX Railroad has recently determined that the estimate previously submitted for the project will not be adequate to cover the construction, engineering, inspection services, and flagman days needed to complete the project. Through August 18th, a total of 80 flagman days have been used. It's estimated that an additional 30 flagman days will be needed to complete the project. Original estimate provided for are 44 flagman days. The breakdown of additional costs are as follows. For additional construction, engineering, and inspection services, they're requesting $8,000. For additional flagging services, which is actually an additional 66 days above the original contract, the original estimate is approximately $61,500.
Thank you.
Approximately $7,000 in contingencies, with an increase in the contract amount in the agreement with CSX as $76,531. It's recommended that a change order in the amount of $76,531 be approved for construction, engineering, inspection services, and CSX flagman services required to complete the project. Project is currently on track for November completion, with live testing following shortly thereafter. Thank you.
Madam President. Basically, what do we say, no, and then, I mean, you know, sort of got us here, so, I mean, I know we're not happy about it, and I don't know how they came up with these numbers, but that's my comment on it. That's all I have to say.
Did they give you how many flagmen they were using?
I think we have one flagman assigned to the project.
So for 66 days, is that what it was? 66 days, they want $61,000?
Correct.
When I used to flag on the road, I wish I would've made $1,000 a day. So they're charging probably about $700 extra for that flagman per day. Like you said, we're stuck.
Well, no, the total, that's additional $61,000. The total was 100 and almost $3,000.
Right. From 41.
Right.
Yeah. Chair. Dave, can you comment on, is there a why when it went from 44 days initially to at 124 days, 80 extra?
I mean, it's just a basically gross underestimation of the amount of days that the, it's a combination of the city and the railroad both working on the, within the track area.
And we have to use their people, so they've got a corner on the market, correct?
Yes, they do.
You would have to do that.
Madam President?
There goes our party. Can I comment on that? Well, we'd rather it be their person, so if there is a problem, you know, that's one of the primary, you know, concerns that we have here is derailments. You know, any kind of incident there can be horrific. And so, you know, it's their railroad, and let them run it.
Madam President? A gross underestimation of any other contractor or any other kind of business, sometimes there's a lot of negotiating going on, but, you know, this is what it is, so we're sort of stuck with it.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Blake?
Are we still on track for, no pun intended, are we still looking at the same completion date, irregardless of these changes? I mean, and this is probably our last piece that we'll do with them. I mean, once we approve this, and, you know, it's pretty much all done. Am I correct in assuming that? And everything gets open, and...
We hope that this is the last change order that we'll have to issue. We're about five weeks behind the original estimate. There was a revised schedule that came out a month or so ago, but we're on schedule based on the revised construction schedule.
October for...
Early November, I would say.
Early November.
Yeah, November. We expect to be done with our work possibly by the end of this month.
Okay.
And from that point, it'll be mainly just the railroad's finishing.
Then November, it's full completion, drive, cross.
The only, I guess the only unknown, if there is one at this point, is the live testing. We weren't given an exact schedule for how long that's going to take, but they won't allow it to be open until they're very confident.
So that's where they test all the signalization and, but we shouldn't see an additional upcharge from that, though, right? You wouldn't think?
We shouldn't see anything at this point. We're hoping not to.
We just want to get this open.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner? Yes. Ordinance number 17-0-77 has been approved. Ordinance number 17-0-78. An ordinance to authorize advances of funds and revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency. Mr. Filippiac?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Malinowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Filippiac. Members of council, this ordinance does a temporary cash advance for the ordinance you just passed to cover the cash to be returned to the general fund upon completion. It also appropriates the amount necessary to do that advance, and in addition, there are a handful of other additional appropriation revisions, $45,500 for the new phone system, and $57,150 for primarily the senior center travel program that has a revenue offset, and finally, a $5,000 increase for a grant, local grants. I recommend approval. Thank you.
Gentlemen?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 17-0-78 has been approved. Ordinance number 17-0-79. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Buckeye Truck Equipment, Inc. for the purchase of an aerial lift and declaring an emergency. Mr. Filippiac?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Swiker, please. Thank you. Bids are open on August 18th for the purchase of an aerial lift. This is the bucket and lifting mechanism for what is typically called a bucket truck. The current lift used by the DPW is approximately 17 years old and is experiencing considerable maintenance downtime. The city received two bids in response to our invitation to bid. The low bid for Altech Industrial Equipment was significantly deficient in that they proposed an aluminum body, whereas we specified a fiberglass body. Low bidder's delivery time was also approximately a year versus six months for the other bidder. In short, it is recommended that we enter into a contract with Buckeye Truck Equipment, Inc. for the purchase of an aerial lift at a cost of $59,995. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 17-0-79 has been approved. Ordinance number 17-0-80 as amended. Mr. Handig?
What needs to be read?
Oh, I'm sorry. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Physio Control, Inc. for the purchase of two LifePak 15 heart monitors and accessories and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'll turn this over to Chief Searls. The main reason this is before you is that between the two of these, it will exceed the $50,000 threshold for purchase. This is a regular purchase to maintain our current standards of equipment. Chief Searls?
Thank you, Mr. Filippiac, members of council. As you know, in the 2017 budget, we had set aside money for the purchase of two LifePak 15 heart monitors. The LifePak 15 offers 12 lead EKG monitoring capabilities that are transmitted directly to the hospital and many other features, and our medics rely on them just about every day for any advanced life support call. I'm pleased to report with the purchase of these two LifePak 15s, every advanced life support squad in the city will have the LifePak 15 technology. The new LifePak 15 heart monitors that we will be buying will be replacing monitors that are more than 15 years old. The original cost for the purchase was $58,282.26, but our cost for the purchase of these new LifePak monitors has brought down to $49,282.26 because we're trading the two monitors that are 15-plus years old in for a $9,000 credit. Physio Control is the sole source vendor for these upgrades. Purchasing is from the state bid program, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Blake?
These are fully portable units, so they go into the house, or do they stay in the squad?
No, these are portable units, Councilman Blake.
Okay, so now, all the squads are fitted with, once we get these, are going to be completely fitted out?
That's correct, sir. The only squad there won't be is the bariatric squad, but all our ACLS squads, our seven squads, will now have LifePak 15s.
Yeah.
It's been a three-year program.
That's fabulous.
It is.
This is great lifesaving stuff. Puts us, you know, at the top. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, before council would vote on this, we need an amendment. The title of the ordinance is correct relative to Physio Control, Inc. being the vendor, yet in Section 1, we did not carry that name down there and substitute it for the name that is shown there. So I recommend an amendment to provide that Section 1 have Physio Control, Inc. be the vendor and not the one that's listed there, War and Fire Equipment of Warren, Ohio.
I would move to amend as stated by the law director.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 17-0-80 has been approved as amended. Ordinance number 17-0-81. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Classic Auto Group for the purchase of a 2018 GMC Sierra 2500 HD four-wheel-drive pickup truck and declaring an emergency. Mr. Filippiac?
Thank you, Madam President. Chief Searls?
Thank you, Mr. Filippiac, members of council. This is our shift commander vehicle, and money was set aside in the 2017 budget for it. This vehicle carries specialized equipment and is also used as a command post on daily incidents that we respond to. The vehicle that this will replace is eight years old and has 66,089 miles on it, and the vehicle that is then being replaced will go to reserve status. That vehicle replaces the 2002 GMC that was taken out of service because of its poor condition. Local competitive pricing was secured, and Classic Auto Group offered the best price. Therefore, it is our recommendation that the city manager be authorized to enter into a contract with Classic Auto Group for one 2018 GMC four-wheel-drive 2500 heavy-duty four-by-four pickup truck in an amount not to exceed $33,721, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Gentlemen?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 17-0-81 has been approved. Ordinance number 17-0-82. An ordinance amending Part 1, Title 5, Chapter 151 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Menner 2006 as amended, the same relating to employment policies and declaring an emergency. Mr. Filippiac?
Thank you, Madam President, and this ordinance would allow for the opportunity to provide pay increases for all non-bargaining members of city employees, full-time members of city employees and part-time, up to 2.5%, which is consistent with the collective bargaining agreements that have been reviewed and approved up to this point by city council.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 17-0-82 has been approved. Ordinance number 17-0-83. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Menner with the municipal, county, and state employees, Union Local 1099, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Filippiac?
Thank you, Madam President, and this is the last of the collective bargain, full-time collective bargaining agreements that will come before city council. This, the only change in this agreement is the wage package, which is consistent, exactly consistent with the police and fire increases that have been reviewed by council. No other language changes exist in this agreement.
Gentlemen?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 17-0-83 has been approved. Second readings. Ordinance number 17-0-74. An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a community reinvestment area agreement with BSD LLC and declaring an emergency. Mr. Filippiac?
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, we would like to ask council to just move forward with a second reading only on items 74 and 75, given the discussion that we had earlier with council about some of the guidelines that we'd like to put into place regarding the CRA agreements. We'd like to have the opportunity to bring a revised copy back for council's consideration, an amended, in an amended version perhaps, as early as the next meeting.
Move to go to second reading?
Second.
Okay. Ordinance number 17-0-75. An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a community reinvestment area agreement with NPP Holdings LLC and declaring an emergency.
Move to go to second reading?
Second.
Okay. Third readings, we have none. Managers' report.
Thank you, Madam President, members of council, and on behalf of all our employees, I want to thank you for the wage increase and showing your confidence, and I can assure you that each member of our city team will go through a review before those are considered and they, as well as a group, show their appreciation. I only have a single item on my managers' report tonight, which I'm sure will make at least Councilman Kirchner happy this evening. Just want to extend our gratitude to all the residents of the city who came out to support the events at the city's amphitheater this past summer. We closed out our season last week with a great Motown band. It was an extended season and overall was a great success. We want to thank all of those who came out to support it, all of those people who came, who gave us such positive feedback. We also got some excellent feedback on how we can move forward and improve on things going forward next year, so we'll take that into consideration before next season starts. And I think what satisfies us more than anything, and just, not just the participation, but the great attitude and goodwill that all of the residents and our visitors showed out there. We had almost zero incidence of rowdiness or anything that would suggest negative behavior of any kind. Just was a great season and a good way to get started, so we want to thank our people for showing such great support. That's all.
Next correspondence. Counsel is in receipt of Menner Municipal Court Report for month-end July 2017. Commission Committee Report. Counsel in receipt of the meeting minutes of Municipal Planning Commission of July 27, 2017. Old business? Bring them. New business? Under new business, before we go ahead, the law director has suggested that we appoint the members of the Income Tax Board of Review to an Assessment Equalization Board on the basis of the limited nature of the objection and because of their duty to also address other tax-related matters. Do I have any?
Madam President?
Mr. Kirchner?
I would move to appoint Ted Dust, Steven Hammerman, and John Eaton to the Assessment Equalization Board.
Any other nominations? Please call the roll.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. They're usually so quick. Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.